...Alegany County Council to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Jared, please take roll.
Mr. Bekowski.
Here.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Ms. Filiaji.
Here.
Mr. Fatulis.
Here.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Ms. Hallam.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Macy.
Here.
Ms. Nakaradi Chapkus.
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Here.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Here.
Ms. Pritzio.
Here.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Here.
As of right now, we have 14 members present.
We'll begin with proclamation slash certificates, 13207-24.
A proclamation recognizing September as Love Your Library Month in Alegany County, sponsored by Councilmember DiMarco and all other members of council.
One of my favorite proclamations to give every year is Love Our Libraries proclamation. And that's because how much the libraries meant to me and to children all across our county, our city and county here, and they're growing up. When I was a kid, my parents started to teach me to read even before I was in kindergarten. So I learned early, and I became a voracious reader, to the point that when I was a kid, my parents bought the world book encyclopedias. And I would like, when I'd read before going to bed at night, would like to read the dictionary and things like that, just because you're looking for things to read, right? But it really is the key to helping kids become, get a good education. And a good education is key to being able to succeed in life. So I can't say how much we appreciate what you folks do at both the Carnegie Libraries of Pittsburgh and the Alegany County Libraries, ACLA here, Amy, that, to provide these services for the kids in our community, well, not just the kids, everybody in our community. So, hey, to get with it here, the proclamation says, whereas today's libraries are vibrant community centers that provide information access to residents of all ages, offering innovative resources and fueling creativity and civic engagement, libraries help children and families discover new and exciting worlds through collections, access to computers, digital resources, and special programming. And whereas all libraries in Alegany County benefit from philanthropic gifts to supplement their annual budgets that enable them to enhance services and programs that are available to all county residents. And the Love Your Library campaign, which began in 2016, is a way for library lovers in Alegany County to support their local libraries and sustain essential services. Your Love Your Library Month has helped the Alegany County Library Association and its member libraries raise awareness about the importance of libraries, library cards, and the services available to all people in our communities. And Love Your Library has been generously supported by the Jack Buncher Foundation by providing significant matching funds and promotional dollars to market this initiative. To date, library donors have contributed more than $9 million during the first eight years of Love Your Library. And whereas Love Your Library has created more library advocates by encouraging customers, library board members, and staff to participate in a unifying countywide effort. And Love Your Library will once again take place during the month of September 2024, and all donations made to any library in Alegany County in September will be generously matched in part by the Jack Buncher Foundation. All library lovers in Alegany County are encouraged to show their library love during the month of September 2024. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Alegany County Councilmember Sam DiMarco, and all members of council, to hereby recognize the month of September 24 as Love Your Library Month 2024 in Alegany County. And witness whereof, I have heretofore caused the seal of the county of Alegany to be affixed this, we did this on the 10th day of September 2024. And we are welcome, we are very fortunate today to have the CEO of the Carnegie Libraries of Pittsburgh, Andrew Medlar, here. And we have Amy Anderson, the CEO of ACLA, Alegany County Library Association. And we have Carolyn Voss here, or Carlin Voss, who's here today from Community Affairs and Government Affairs. So thank you, folks, for coming. And I want to give these to you and ask you to step up and say a few words.
Great. Thank you, council. Thank you very much. On behalf of all of the libraries of Alegany County, we want to thank you for this proclamation. Your support of our libraries is greatly appreciated. And we hope that sometime during September, or any time during the year, that you can come out and visit one of the 46 member libraries at over 75 locations across the county. So thank you very much, and we ask that you continue to love your libraries.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Councilwoman DiMarco. We appreciate this recognition and the support that you and all of your fellow members of county council, that you provide to our libraries across the county, and your recognition of the value that we bring every day to our neighbors and every community is truly, truly appreciated and makes such a difference to so many. At Carnegie Library of Pittsburgh, we have a vision, and it is of an impactful, and supportive, and inclusive community with the library at its heart, that enables individual and collective achievement, access to knowledge, and a sense of community and joy. And with your support throughout September and all year long, we are doing just that. So thank you, and we'll see you at the library.
Who here remembers the first books that you checked out of the library when you were kids growing up? I remember Call of the Wild, Black Stallion, My Friend Flicka, all of those? Yes, hey, you know, let's get some pictures, yeah, let's get some pictures taken.
13209-24 is a proclamation celebrating the 2024 McCandless Township Community Day, sponsored by Councilmember Filiaji. 13210-24 is a proclamation congratulating Charles E. Evans on receiving the 2024 James R. McGregor Award, sponsored by Councilmember Klein. 13211-24 is a proclamation recognizing Judge Christine A. Ward on receiving the 2024 Judge Robert E. Dower Award, sponsored by Councilmember Klein. 13212-24 is a proclamation recognizing Rainbow Kitchen Community Services 40th Anniversary, sponsored by Councilmembers Klein and Macy. And 13213-24 is a proclamation recognizing Executive Director Donna Little for her dedication to Rainbow Kitchen Community Services after 24 years, also sponsored by Councilmembers Klein and Macy.
Is there any public comment on agenda items?
We have none.
Okay, approval of minutes?
We have none.
Okay, presentation of appointments. All the appointments being presented this evening are referred to the Committee on Appointment Review. And if there are no objections, I'd like to have the clerk read them all at this time. Any objections? None? Go ahead.
Okay, the first group are all to the Children, Youth, and Families Advisory Board, all for a term effective through September 24, 2027, and all sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13179-24 is the appointment of Dr. Helen Cahalane. 13180-24 is the appointment of Monica Ruiz. 13181-24 is the appointment of Dr. Erica L. Givner. 13182-24 is the appointment of Dr. Michelle Clayton. 13183-24 is the appointment of Hazel Azar D. Carpenter Saunders. 13184-24 is the appointment of W. Aaron Mickens. 13185-24 is the appointment of Aubrey Plush. 13186-24 is the appointment of Dr. Lysia L. Lentz. 13187-24 is the appointment of Reverend Paul Abernathy. 13188-24 is the appointment of Detective Joseph E. Ricaz. 13189-24 is the appointment of Dr. Terry Collin Dilmour. 13190-24 is the appointment of Zoe Benel. 13191-24 is the appointment of April W. Kwiatkowski. 13192-24 is the appointment of Shannon M. Anglero. 13193-24 is the appointment of Melinda Angeles. 13194-24 is the appointment of Judge Kate Lovelace. This next group are all appointed to the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council, all for term effective through September 24, 2028, and all sponsored by the Chief Executive. 13195-24 is the reappointment of Laura Poskin. 13196-24 is the reappointment of Jessica Adams. 13197-24 is the reappointment of Carrie Stott. 13198-24 is the appointment of Christine Huntsinger. 13199-24 is the appointment of Jeff Weinberg. 13200-24 is the appointment of Gina Goth. 13201-24 is the appointment of Lorraine Burnett King. 13202-24 is the appointment of Chris Rossellot. 13203-24 is the appointment of Xena Scott. 13204-24 is the appointment of Elaine Jenkins. And 13205-24 is the appointment of Representative Jessica Benham.
Okay, unfinished business. Committee on Appointment Review for the second reading. 13132-24.
Approving the appointment of John Fournier, MPA, to serve as the county manager for a term to commence immediately upon council approval, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilwoman Nakaradi Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on August 29, 2024, and affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing, go ahead.
I just want to say I am going to be voting in favor of this appointment tonight, but I just want to make some reservations known, but I really just want to make sure that the county exec is set up with the team that she thinks that she needs to make sure that we have the best county that we can be, that I know Mr. Fournier wants, that I know we all want, and that I know is in the best interest of the people that we were elected to represent. So I will be a yes vote, and I'm excited to see what she does with this new leadership in her administration.
Thank you. Any other comments? In the sake of transparency, just so everyone understands, typically when you're hiring someone, you put the salary in. So the salary Mr. Fournier is going to be making is $285,000 with a $50,000 relocation bonus. Sorry, not a bonus, relocation fee. So any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Motion has been made and seconded. We'll do a roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji.
Yes.
Mr. Fatulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, nose zero. The motion passes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Would you like to say something, Mr. County Manager? Not to put you on the spot, of course.
Yeah. I just want to say, first of all, thank you to the county executive for this incredible opportunity. We're not strangers to the city of Pittsburgh and to Alegany County, and we're very excited to be back to carry out the important mission of the county. And I also want to say thank you very much to the county council. I've enjoyed meeting each of you and discussing your hopes and dreams for the county, and I look forward to working with you to implement them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Approving the reappointment of Justin Levitt Pearl to the Independent Police Review Board for a term effective through August 27, 2028, sponsored by Councilmember Pritzio.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on August 29, 2024, and affirmatively recommended this appointment and I would, reappointment, I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Does anyone, do we need a roll call vote on this, or is it a voice vote? Roll call vote? Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji.
Yes.
Mr. Fatulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Here.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 14, nose one. The bill passed. The appointment passed.
13162-24.
Approving the appointment of Kiana Buckner to the Independent Police Review Board for a term effective through August 27, 2028, sponsored by Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, and affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13167-24.
Approving the reappointment of Arwais Mulat, Mualia. I apologize to the Community Services Advisory Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2026, sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, and affirmatively recommended this appointment, and I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13169-24.
Approving the reappointment of Charles Davis to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, and affirmatively recommended this reappointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
131, motion carries. 13170-24.
Approving the reappointment of Mario C. Brown to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
The Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, and affirmatively recommended this reappointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13171-24.
Approving the appointment of Jessica Northcott-Brelady to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13172-24.
Approving the appointment of Ann Cox to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13173-24.
Approving the appointment of Gabby Warner to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13174-24.
Approving the appointment of Fred Quinn III to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
The Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13175-24.
Approving the appointment of Josie Morgano to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, and affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13176-24.
Approving the appointment of Christine Naaman to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
The Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13176-24.
I apologize, 13177?
724, sorry.
Thank you. Approving the appointment of Daniel Garrigan to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment, and I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13176-24.
Approving the appointment of Daniel Garrigan to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13172-24.
Approving the appointment of Ann Cox to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13173-24.
Approving the appointment of Gabby Warner to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13174-24.
Approving the appointment of Fred Quinn III to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
The Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13175-24.
Approving the appointment of Josie Morgano to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call? None. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13176-24.
Approving the appointment of Christine Naaman to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
The Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment. I'd like to make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. 13176-24.
I apologize, 13177?
724, sorry.
Thank you. Approving the appointment of Daniel Garrigan to the Drug and Alcohol Planning Council for a term to be effective through September 10, 2027, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes, President Katina, the Committee on Appointment Review met on September 5, 2024, affirmatively recommended this appointment, and I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Do we need a roll call vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Committee on Economic Development and Housing for the second reading. 13153-24.
An ordinance approving the sale of the county's interest in a parcel of real property located at Hollywood Drive, Hampton Township, Pennsylvania 15044, and identified as block and lot 1076E393 for the sale price of $3,300 to Ashley and Kenneth Downing, sponsored by the Chief Executives.
Councilmember Bekowski.
The Committee on Economic Development and Job Creation met on August 28, and affirmatively recommends this to council. I make that motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Jared.
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bekowski.
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati.
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji.
Yes.
Mr. Fatulis.
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Yes.
Ms. Hallam.
Yes.
Mr. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Macy.
Yes.
Ms. Nakaradi Chapkus.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary.
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina.
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio.
Yes.
Mr. Walton.
Yes.
President Katina.
Yes.
Eyes 15, nose zero. The bill passed.
Thank you. Are there any liaison reports this evening? Hearing none. We're going to go to the other proclamation, 132208-24.
A proclamation recognizing the 10th anniversary of the odd, mysterious, and fascinating history of Pittsburgh, sponsored by councilmembers Hallam and Bekowski.
All right, I am so excited to give you this proclamation tonight. Folks on council know that I'm not necessarily the biggest fan of proclamations, but I like to reserve them for the people that I know really deserve them and have really made an impact in the community that we were all elected to serve. So I first came to know of John via his work in the Ross Township Historical Society, a very close mutual friend of ours, Bob Leo, who we lost last year, but I know we both loved very, very much. He was the one who told me about this project that he was so excited to work on with his mentor, who was teaching him so much about Ross Township and via Odd, Mysterious, and Fascinating History of Pittsburgh, the region as a whole, and just how excited he was and how much he lit up when he talked about you. And when we first met, it was like I was meeting this local legend. I mean, I know everyone that graduates from North Hills is amazing, as is evidenced by our county executive, myself, and also you. It was still just so empowering to meet somebody who loved his community as much as I do, if not even maybe more. Everything I have learned about the history of the community I grew up in, I learned from things that you introduced me to. So I thank you for that. And I also want to thank Lisa and the whole fam who came out today, because I know how much time and effort he and you put into this, and it is a labor of love, and it's a whole family affair. So I'm just really honored to be able to present this to you on behalf of the 10th anniversary of Odd, Mysterious, and Fascinating History of Pittsburgh, and to thank you guys all for the contributions you gave towards 10 years of this as well. So, without further ado, this is a proclamation recognizing the 10th anniversary of the Odd, Mysterious, and Fascinating History of Pittsburgh. Whereas John Schalkowski, creator of the Odd, Mysterious, and Fascinating History of Pittsburgh, a popular and unique social media account founded in 2014, Mr. Schalkowski investigates the most extraordinary, enigmatic, and forgotten tales of Western Pennsylvania and Pittsburgh's history. And whereas pure curiosity is what started Mr. Schalkowski's passion project, that has become something so much bigger and has transformed the way Pittsburgh's history is understood and celebrated. Mr. Schalkowski, a Ross Township native, woo-woo, graduated from North Hills before moving to Los Angeles. Dating back to when Mr. Schalkowski attended film school in UCLA for music, he would look at buildings in Hollywood and wondered what places used to be. When he moved back to Pittsburgh, his curiosity and passion continued, which started with a strange story that Mr. Schalkowski read about the Alegany River. And whereas this perception of the physical world is connected to his sense of curiosity and to his obsession with research. Mr. Schalkowski spends a lot of time on websites, I'm sure that's an understatement,
Oh, again. Sorry. Apparently so.
Everybody's connected in this.
Okay, everybody, right here on me. Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Okay, congratulations. God bless you.
You know what? I'd have had to do that at my age, had to go through books. You've got to cut and paste.
I know, yeah, exactly.
You want to go?
New business ordinances and resolutions, 132-14-24.
An ordinance of the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania amending and supplementing Article 403 of the Administrative Code of Allegheny County entitled "County Manager" in order to establish a transparent, publicly accessible database of seats available on authorities, boards, commissions, and other entities to which the chief executive or council has the authority to nominate or make appointments, sponsored by councilmembers Hallam and Grisbeck.
That will go to Government Reform, 132-15-24.
A resolution of the county of Allegheny amending the grants to special accounts budget for 2024, submission number 05-24.
That will go to Budget and Finance.
I apologize, that's sponsored by the Chief Executive.
And new business motions, 132-17-24.
A motion of the council of Allegheny County approving the settlement of litigation captioned as "County Council v. Fitzgerald et al. Indocated at GD2311396," sponsored by the Chief Executive.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, Mr. President, council members, I offer this motion to approve the settlement of the below-capping litigation.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there a discussion at this point?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm going to be voting no on this settlement. I think I've made that clear to everyone on council, but I just wanted to, on the record, explain why I'm voting no against this settlement. I've read through the settlement a dozen times, back and forth, trying to figure out who actually is benefiting from this settlement, from us ending this lawsuit and agreeing to something that doesn't materially change the position we were in when we voted to file this lawsuit in the first place. I think it is a waste of taxpayer money to have spent the money that we spent on litigation to just give up and accept that we're wiping our hands clean of a really big responsibility of ours, right? We were all elected to represent the people of this county. That includes everyone, taxpayers, the families of children involved in the juvenile justice system, children who are incarcerated in the Allegheny County Jail today, children who are incarcerated in Schuman today. That is all of our responsibilities. This settlement doesn't give those people any better position than they were in when this contract was first entered into in violation of county law. It doesn't even say anywhere in this settlement, we agree that we did something wrong and we won't do it again. It took a judge to say that. I think it is disingenuous to act like we are advocating for our constituents and working in their best interests and agreeing to this settlement, which doesn't give council any authority over what happens in Schuman, which gives them a building that we never agreed to give them in the first place, which doesn't allow for an oversight body that actually gives someone, even if it's not us, the authority to make sure that what happened in Adelphi doesn't harm these children forever. I can never vote for a settlement that doesn't even give us one thing that we asked for when we started out in this lawsuit. I am very perplexed as to how anyone could vote for this settlement. I'm not going to make any assumptions as to why the folks voting for this settlement are voting for this settlement, but I would love if, off the record, you could tell me why you think this puts us in a better position than we were in before, and why this does anything to do what I thought we all agreed upon, which was to protect the kids in Schuman. So, again, I am a very hard no on this settlement.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Councilman Macy.
There has been some new information that has come to light that has been negotiated by a solicitor, as well as the administration. And I would like to go into executive session so we could clear the air on...
What new inform... I guess I'm at a loss as to what new information has been provided.
Well, I could read it, but I thought it would be best if we go into executive session and discuss this.
There's no need to go into the executive session. We're deciding whether or not we want to, we want to accept these terms and conditions as, as if. Reading that and sharing that with, with the general public doesn't alter that, that position whatsoever.
So, is there anything you want... I mean, if you want to go over anything you can, Councilman Macy.
Okay, I have received information that has been agreed to, that the administration has agreed that council should have the ability to recommend individuals for nomination to one of the seats on the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board. The council previously had no recommendation of authority. The original contract required no substantive reporting by Adelphi to the county regarding its operation. The settlement requires regular substantive reporting. The original contract did not require council approval for extensions beyond the first five-year contract term. The settlement does require council approval for extensions. The Board of Advisors are virtually no... Excuse me. The Board of Advisors has virtually no defined structure or function under the Commonwealth law that created it. The settlement establishes guidelines for the board's operations.
Just for clarification, Mr. Solicitor, that was in the original proposal, correct?
It's in the order that's being proposed.
Okay. Councilman Walton.
Thank you. Look.
Sam, I'll go to you next.
Yeah. I've been consistent from the outset. And from the outset, I've said, the only benefit, the only thing that anyone derives from that is our solicitor and him generating legal fees. The county is not better served by this document. We should have never filed the damn thing in the beginning. We didn't have the ability to change additions that were set forth, and nowhere in the judge's opinion did they, did she indicate that our law was violated. If they did, if she did, then we should make sure that it's appealed. And, and that we're, that it's demonstrated that we didn't have, that the executive didn't have the ability to do what they did. This, we've been horns wagging. It's been a boondoggle. We got buckus out of this, and the only one that got money out of this is the solicitor.
Councilman DiMarco.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's important to take us back to what this thing was originally about and what it started over, okay? One of council's key roles or responsibilities is delineated in the charter, is that we have oversight of our county real estate, okay? The county executive negotiated a contract with Adelphi to provide for juvenile detention services for Allegheny County. Now, we've always had, or I don't want to say always going back, but prior to this, we've had a contract with Adelphi. They took and housed our juveniles in juvenile detention facilities in Cambria County and up there in Westmoreland County. So, they've been providing services to us. And what happened was, we had members of council who felt that the county executive didn't come to council and didn't fulfill his obligation to allow us to oversee the real estate, so they wanted to sue. There's no, we're not giving anybody any building. We're allowing a company to come in and provide management of juvenile detention services for the juveniles here in Allegheny County. By doing so, we make them, keep them here closer to home, so they're closer to their families and friends. That's a significant benefit to that. By doing so, we provide law enforcement the opportunity to intervene and perhaps bring some of these kids, you know, sort of a timeout to sort of break the spell of whatever's causing them to commit some of the crimes that they're committing, you know, out there in the field. We've seen in the past few years, we've had kids that were picked up that had no choice because we had no place to put them, released right back onto the street. One of it's committed a murder within hours. We've had at least five juveniles that would have been eligible for detention here at Schuman Center that were killed in shootings. We've had a tremendous amount of pain and grief and all of that suffered by our community because we did not have a juvenile detention center. As far as trying to have oversight over this facility and be able to do that, that's not within our responsibilities. That's not within our duties. It's just oversight of real estate. And again, we're not giving anybody the building. The one thing I do agree with one of my colleagues on is that it's a tremendous waste of time and taxpayer money. I will be voting yes on this, because this needs to be put to bed so that we can move on. But as far as all of the rest of this stuff here, let's just get this done, get it over with, and move on to the issues that are important to the people of Allegheny County, and they can make a difference in their lives. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilman Klein.
Yes, I, well, I, I agree with much of what you said, Councilmember DiMarco. And I think that if we think about what the scope of the lawsuit was, I mean, the scope of the lawsuit was pretty narrow, but it was significant, because it spoke to the respective powers of, you know, the two branches of government that are in place here. And so, the membership of council concluded that we did have the responsibility, the legal authority, to decide whether or not the property that we're speaking of could be used for that intended purpose, obviously, for which it has been used in the past. So, once again, I don't think that there was ever any contemplation about the level, an increased level of our involvement and oversight and how the facility is managed. At this point in time, the responsibility for that facility, the responsibility for that contract is in the hands of the county executive, who will have to hold the provider of the services, Adelphi, to account. And if things are not going according to plan, if things are not going well, you know, those, those concerns have a way of finding their way into the public realm, and council will, of course, certainly weigh in on that. But I think that what we have to keep in mind is that it was really about defining the respective responsibilities of the executive branch and council, and clearly, we believe that council had the authority to, you know, vote on this, and that is authority, that is something that was not granted us in the decision that was made by the last administration. And I will be voting yes in support of this settlement.
Councilmember Nakareti Chapkus.
Pardon me?
Councilmember Nakareti Chapkus, did you want to say something?
Sure. So, like Councilmember Klein, I would reiterate what he had shared with us, that, you know, the essence of this litigation was surrounded around whether or not the county executive had the ability to enter into a contract that didn't come before council that was in regard to the use of county property. And for that, a clear definition, a decision was made in that regard, in that indeed, the county executive did need to come to county council for that approval. And, you know, in the course of discussions, in the course of negotiations between the three parties, county council, the county executive, and Adelphi, you know, the parties all, I think, did their best over a series of weeks to try and come to some resolution, and where county council, I think, had been able to move the needle in the contract, and some of the things that it was concerned about, you know, was, we were looking at a five-year term and an automatic 10-year renewal, and that has changed. You know, that was a very expensive contract that had been entered into in a time when we are concerned about budget constraints and whether or not that was an appropriate amount of funds dedicated to that particular use. So, that was one. You know, there, there is the concern about the Board of Advisors, and the Board of Advisors, the slate that had come before council initially, said they weren't even really clear about what their role was. And there will be a set of bylaws, and there's some more concrete information around what that looks like. There is a clear, a clear set of documentation and reporting mechanisms that have to go from Adelphi to the Board of Advisors prior to, quarterly, I believe, prior to any meetings, so that they have a sense of the operations that exist and, and the guidance and recommendations that they can put forth. And I would really go back to the Board of Advisors, because this is one area where the county residents can weigh in and provide input. And so, I would urge Adelphi to really utilize the skills and experience of those individuals when that is put into place, when those bylaws are created, to do it in a good faith effort and with negotiations that are transparent and honest and open, because there's a lot of expertise around this county that can help guide the, the operations of, of Schuman. And so, I'm hopeful, you know, we've even heard, there was a task force that was developed at the University of Pittsburgh around this issue. There's a lot of good recommendations there that can still be put into place and implemented. We've heard from individuals like Sarah Goodkind, like Kristi Trautman, who have come and said, here are some things that have been missed. I would encourage, again, anybody associated with the operations of Schuman to use the expertise around the table. And so, with that, I think I'll stop.
Thank you. Councilmember Grisbeck.
Thank you very much. Mr. Solicitor, quick question. So, the, the ruling that was given by Judge Emery, the initial opinion, that the contract should have come in front of county council, do you believe that that is future precedent that we can use for, you know, any cases that may come in front of us in the future?
I'm anxious to have to discuss something, and maybe Attorney Klein, it's my personal opinion, it is precedent.
Thank you very much. I, I think when we're talking about, you know, the, the importance of this lawsuit, that alone is something to be gained from this. I am very much of the opinion that we should be a true check and balance on the county executive, and that serves to further that goal. I think if we are concerned about wasting money, we should be much more concerned about the five-year, $73 million contract that was given to Adelphi that's roughly 40% more than the county was previously paying to operate Schuman. That is a much larger waste of county funding and county resources than this lawsuit was. I mean, this lawsuit was correct, right, in nature. It was correct. We should have pushed the issue. We should have made sure that future uses of county land, county property are coming in front of Allegheny County Council. I share a lot of the concerns that Councilwoman Hallam has regarding the use of this facility by Adelphi. I think we're all aware of a lot of the past issues that Adelphi has had with their, their handling and their, their dealing with children. However, I don't think that furthering this lawsuit and continuing on this path and not settling will do anything to protect those children. I think, while I agree with you that there was not much that was gained here overall outside of a bit of precedent, there was the ability to exit this contract by county council after five years. I think that is far too late, and I encourage the county executive to push the issue if this contract is not being met by Adelphi, but that is something that we did not have before. Previously, Adelphi and the county executive could have just renewed this contract for another five years, after that five-year, $73 million period. So, I, I think that in and of itself, while, while not much, and certainly not as much as I would like, is enough reason that I'll be voting yes on this contract, on this settlement.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to correct the record, because it was mentioned about, you know, the county executive's office having oversight over this, and that's why council isn't needed. That is not the case. The county executive does not have oversight over Adelphi. The only point in time in which the county executive or council have any say over what's happening as Adelphi is in 2028, whenever the contract is up for another five-year renewal term. That is in the settlement. That is language that was in there. There has been no dispute about that. There is no elected entity that has ever, any oversight over Schuman. Even the advisory board members, who I agree, the slate that was put in front of us were fantastic. There are amazing people in this county, in the juvenile justice realm, who would do a great service to this country, to this county by having oversight over this facility. The advisory board has no such oversight. All they can do, a horrible thing could be happening at the Adelphi facility, a horrible thing could be happening. Kids could be being harmed, and the advisory board can do nothing about it. They can say, hey, this is bad, please don't do this, but none of their advice is binding. There is no provision to terminate this contract for any reason, unlike every other contract this county ever enters into. There is not a single provision in this contract to terminate prior to 2028. We have seen the harm that has happened in Schuman. We have seen the harm that has happened in Schuman when the county ran it, nobody disputes that. And I would bet that most people on this county, on this council actually wouldn't even dispute that they want a county detention facility, that they feel there is a need for that. But with all the money that this county has put into the renovations of Schuman for Adelfoy, with all of the money that is being spent on this contract, much more than was ever spent before when Schuman was being run, the county could have taken their time and their energy instead of fighting us in court and could have put that into trying to resecure licensing to run Schuman as a county property, as it was before, as it did function properly years ago, as it could be again. And so I just want to make sure that nobody thinks that any elected official has any ability to stop anything horrible, God forbid it happened, until 2028. It's not just council that we are handcuffing here, it is the administration, it is the courts, it is everyone else. We have said, Adelfoy, this is yours, do as you please, we'll see you in 2028. Not cool with that.
Councilmember Nakarety Chavkas?
May I ask a question of our solicitor?
Yes, ma'am.
Regarding, this has come up in many conversations in the past in terms of our discussion around Schuman. Can you clarify the language that is stated in terms of the county executive's ability to terminate the contract? Should they be aware of or have knowledge of a performance issue or something that is in against the nature of the contract, I guess? You know, poor performance is the only thing I can think of, but something along that line? If there was harm being done to the residents, things of that nature?
Miss Feasens, Malfees.
Malfees. Malfees, yeah, thank you.
Okay, yes, there's a provision in the contract that the county has the right to terminate the agreement on notice to the contractor for any reason set forth in the default standards of the Incorporated Standard County Terms and Conditions. One of those default conditions is failure to perform their duties. So that can be done at any time.
Thank you.
If I may, if I may. We are all aware that the license for Schuman was removed by the state for failure, for performance failures. So have any, I'd like to be, to be made aware, if any of those licensing obligations and standards have been diminished, wiped out, or altered in the intervening period. If not, then that addresses much of the concern. Because a lot of what's going on here is rhetoric. But, you know, notwithstanding that, I sense that this is going to pass. I sense that this is going to pass. I would urge us, I would urge us to be more responsible and accountable moving forward.
Councilmember?
Yeah. No one denies that the state revoked the license of Schuman, but the reality is, we also know how many years Schuman stayed open under county control on provisional licensing. Years of horrible things happened, of failures to perform the county's duties at Schuman, and they applied for and got provisional licenses to stay open and attempt to remedy the situation year after year after year. So while I am not claiming that any standards were relaxed, what I'm saying is, is that Schuman operated in very poor condition before, under the same licensing expectations that Adelfoy will be held to. And the only reason Schuman shut down was because the county did not reapply for provisional license, did not attempt to get another one. They could have done what they had done year after year after year, attempted to remedy it, invest the investment that is being invested now into fixing it, keeping it county-run, keeping county oversight, including the county exec and council and a revamped advisory board. All of that could have happened, and it was a decision to not do that.
On the motion.
Anyone else? Councilmember DeMarco?
Look, I was just going to add here, my point about the county executive was the county executive, based upon the judge's decision, the declaratory judgment, was that they have responsibility over contracts. So any services contracts, that's what they have responsibility over. You know, it was that they have to bring it to us for use of county real estate. That's what the legal agreement said. And secondly, in regards to something terrible happening at Adelfoy. Adelfoy's been operating in this state for many, many years. They're able to retain their license, we didn't seem able to be retained, to be able to retain ours. You talk about these horrible things that were happening there, and they continue to happen and happen and happen under county oversight or county management. Okay? There was a reason why the state revoked our license. If some terrible things were to be happening there, then I'm certain the state will step in and could revoke Adelfoy's license, which they've not seemed to do anyplace else. I'm sure the district attorney or other folks here would step in, you could file suit. And as our solicitor said, there are performance, you know, obligations. So I believe that there, while there are sufficient safeguards in place to address that this facility is managed properly, and if not, they'll be responsible for what occurs. If they don't manage it properly, their contract will not be renewed. Okay? If they have egregious defaults or provisions or problems, then it will be, their license will be revoked, or will be able to cancel off for cause and be able to walk away. So, you know, I think the best thing we can do is to get this off our plate, move forward, and focus on the business at hand for the people of Allegheny County. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Klein?
Just to clarify, I mean, I, you know, I don't remember much from Contracts 101, but I think that a contract is an agreement between two parties, and sometimes two or more parties. And so it would seem that we have a contract here that spells out or defines rights and responsibilities on both sides. So just to clarify, I'm speaking to my colleague, Councilmember Hallam, I mean, it sounds like you're suggesting that this is a, you know, a one-sided contract, a contract of adhesion. I mean, you're suggesting that there is no enforcement power on the part of those who entered into the contract?
If that is a question, yes, that is absolutely what I am saying about that.
How is it, I mean, what lends legitimacy to the contract is that there are rights and responsibilities on both sides, it's a product of mutual assent. So, I mean, you know, obviously, mistakes are sometimes made by people in leadership roles, but I can't imagine that in looking at the creation of this contract, that there are not provisions in the contract that the county administration can hold Adelfoy to account for.
We can agree to disagree on that one. Yeah, I do think this is a very one-sided.
Well, I don't, but you do.
I have appreciated the discussion and the positions shared by my colleagues. But my recollection, which you've heard me say before, I don't trust as much as I used to, was that our original suit was very narrowly based on the question of, should this have come to council first? And on that point, my understanding is that the judge has ruled in favor of our position on that. And so I say we take the win and move on. And these other things that we're talking about, I do think that they're worthwhile having the discussion, but they don't seem to be germane to the suit or the particular narrow issue that we brought up in the suit where the judge has ruled in our favor.
Question on a motion. Anyone else? Okay. Before we vote, so, Councilmember Fietolos?
I've been waving the whole time. Well, here's my take on this whole thing. Put my two cents in, right? First of all, I never voted for the lawsuit in the first place. That was a no vote, okay? So my opinion was, I felt that we had the ability to negotiate the Home Rule Charter facts without a lawsuit. We knew that our administration said, no, we were wrong, and we know they were, they think they were right. But the bottom line is, they were leaving. So now we have a new administration, and we could have sat down with the new administration and said, look, this is part of the Home Rule Charter, this is what we should be doing, so make sure that we don't have this problem in the future. A lawsuit wasn't necessary. All we have to do is sit down with the people we know and come up with that agreement based on the Home Rule Charter. I mean, it was law. I mean, that's it. And that's what the judge said. So the lawsuit itself, I feel, wasn't ever necessary. That's why I'd voted no in the first place. But we never gave ourselves a chance, as far as I know, to move on to the next administration to straighten out this problem. But here we are, X amount of dollars later, and now we're going to settle because, at this point, what are we going to fight for? So that's the way my take on it. So I'm going to vote yes to end this. Thank you.
Question on a motion. Quick summary. So on March 14th of this year, just to put this in perspective, Judge Emery ruled, and this is a direct quote now, "The contract clearly permits the use of county land, buildings, and other real or personal property. This court finds that any contract for services is the responsibility of the county executive. However, if that contract includes the conveyance of county-owned real property, including permission to exclusively use that property, county council must also approve it." At that point, in my opinion, the purpose of the declaratory judgment action was accomplished. The court had expressly held that council approval was necessary for the Schuman contract, and by extension, that the original contract was not executed in accordance with county law. Now, throughout this entire summer, council, the administration, and Adelfoy have been negotiating in the hopes of finding a mutually agreeable way to keep Schuman open. Those negotiations have yielded these following results. The administration has agreed that council should have the ability to recommend individuals for nomination to one of the seats on the Juvenile Justice Advisory Board, and the chief executive must select one of those three recommendations of council. The council previously had no selection authority. Council must also subsequently approve all of the chief executives' four nominees. Secondly, the original contract required no substantive reporting by Adelfoy to the county regarding any of its operations. The settlement requires regular substantive reporting. Thirdly, the original contract did not require council approval for extensions beyond the first five-year contract term. The settlement does require council approval for these extensions. Four, and final, the Board of Advisors has virtually no defined structure or function under the Commonwealth law that created it. This settlement establishes guidelines for the board's operations that it have a minimum of six meetings per year where the public can come on, can come in and comment on matters related to Schuman. Now, given these results, I feel the declaratory judgment action has resulted in a guarantee of council's voice in the operation of Schuman and improvements in the operation of Schuman. The initial ruling in the lawsuit established that any contract for the use of Schuman must have council's approval. The lawsuit then significantly had improvements on the terms of the original contract governing the contract's length, termination process, and additional oversight. The proposed consent order does not contain everything that everyone wanted, but it is a vast improvement over the original contract, which was very one-sided. It allows Schuman to continue operations and provide a safe place for our juveniles and provides placement when there wasn't a facility before. Continuing this litigation, in my opinion, has already succeeded in order to achieve some incremental gain over what's before us tonight. Would be a waste of time and the taxpayer money, in my view. It is my sincerest hope that council will approve this proposed settlement, and we can begin a cooperative relationship with the administration and the courts geared toward improving the function, equity, and humanus of the juvenile justice system and have a placement, have a place for these juvenile offenders moving forwards. So the question's been called, roll call vote, please, Jared?
On the motion to approve, Mr. Bedkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bonnerati?
Yes.
Mr. DeMarco?
Yes.
Ms. Filiaji?
Yes.
Mr. Fatoulas?
Yes.
Mr. Grisbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Hallam?
No.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Macy?
Hell, yes.
Ms. Nakarety Chavkas?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Messina?
Yes.
Ms. Pritzio?
Yes.
Mr. Walton?
I abstain, and the reason that I abstain is that I don't support this settlement. I continue to believe that we were wrong in initiating the litigation from that outset.
Thank you.
President Katina?
Yes.
Is 12 knows one. I apologize, is 13 knows one with one abstention, the bill passes.
Notification of Contracts 13218-24.
A communication summarizing approved executive actions for the month of August 2024.
Receive and file, please.
Yeah. Is there a second of the receive and file?
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made in second discussion, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I guess, have a general question, whether it's for Jared or our solicitor or whoever, about, so when we get these, if there's more information that we want about the executive actions before we receive and file them, or even, I guess, we just did it so after, how do we go about getting that information? Because there's a couple that were on this list from the August executive actions that I would really appreciate more information on. And it's my understanding that some information was being sought out, and we couldn't get it, so I'm just wondering what's the best process to receive it.
The question, I mean, anyone can ask.
I can give a specific example of one of the executive actions if you'd like. For example, there was one, I mean, that, you know, that I care about a lot, was about a lawsuit settlement for $1.7 million, and I'm just wondering, like, what that was for. There was another one for $67,000. There was another one that was brought up earlier about the $50,000 that we had never heard of previously but found in this packet. And then a concern about the use of $500,000 in economic development in the tourism fund for the county police to have a new classroom at their firing range, and just some kind of confusion over how those two things are related. And I'm just wondering, before we kind of dead this issue, where we get that information?
Well, we get that information. I mean, Jared and I were going over the executive's actions, and if you check your email, you'll see there's a recent email in there because we were trying to get some information from the administration. We just got it late this afternoon. But anyone can ask for that information, they request it through Jared or Sarah if it's financial, so it can be done that way. So if you have any questions.
Is wanting more details on the executive actions something that, like, we can ask for as a body prior to us receiving and filing the executive actions? Just detailed information, I mean, you guys have seen that list, there's a million things on it, and, you know, it's hard to kind of pick through what looks important, what jumps out. And so I'm just wondering if that's something that would have to come from this body or what? Because again, specifically the things around the county police, the jail, there's another agreement for $150,000 with Westmoreland County Prison for housing incarcerated people. And so again, just things that I would like more information on, and these happen every single time we approve executive actions.
I would tend to say that the council certainly can ask for more information with regard to anything that it wants. Systematic review of every EA on the EA report would be very difficult in all likelihood because there are a significant number of items on it, and we tend to receive it within a few days to maybe a week and a half of the agenda date for which it's received and filed. So I don't know what to suggest in the way of process, but some degree of selectivity about what everybody would like more information about might be more practicable.
Even just the summary of, it's this much money, this is what it's for, as opposed to just a couple words and who it's to, I think would be helpful. And I'm just wondering if that's something we need to legislate or is already required that there's a summary provided to us? I just, I've never, all the ones I've looked over before, this was the first one that really jumped out at me, and so I just want to kind of clarify what that could look like.
Councilmember Fietolos?
Yeah, wouldn't that be considered to be discussion during a budget committee meeting and ask these questions that you're asking versus us just saying, yeah, received and filed? Just ask questions before we do that.
This is the use of funding after we have already gone through the budget. Like, we approved the 2024 budget back in December.
We should have been asking sooner than...
Well, we didn't know that they were going to do these things, and again, it is common practice.
Right, right, okay. All right.
We couldn't foresee that in the budget.
Well...
So...
So...
It's always after the fact, is kind of my point.
We'll need to circle back to find out how to get you more information then, so we'll do that. The motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The motion has been made in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Public comment on general items.
We have one. Natalie Brown.
She's not here. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion has been made in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. County manager, former county manager, Stephen Palarsky, thank you for...